All right. Good evening. I call this regular meeting to let your town council order. Please join me for the place of the ladies.
... United States of America and to a republic with its hands, one nation under God, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please go to the floor.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Holdridge?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mrs. McGrath?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Waddeck?
Here.
Eight here, zero absent?
One absent.
Are you one absent?
But we have a four. Are the residents or property owners that would like to address the town council's seat? Yes, ma'am.
Margaret Wilson on Six Eagle Bridge Drive in Galesbury. And I have a question. And I'm directing this just open. If you had in your home, a nineteen to twenty-year-old carpet, which had been at one time, within the last year soaked with sewage, and big section cut out of it and then put back with the crazy stitching, and you had the money to replace it, would you replace it? I understand the money is in the town budget to do that for the senior center. I would like to see that money released so that that carpeting can be replaced for not only hygiene reasons, but for safety reasons because of the places where the carpet has been patched back together makes it a very easy place for some elderly people to trip.
Thank you. And any other residents or property owners? Yes, sir.
My name is Larry Holdridge, Twenty-Sixth Court Road in Stonegate Village. I was here May eleventh and found out it was an information meeting for the council and I was to see the mayor. Unfortunately, my oldest son was in the hospital and passed away, so I've been inactive ever since. However, I'm back. This is just an information meeting. Linda Davis wasn't here at that meeting and I'd like to give her a copy. It's right with the chair.
Sure. Sure.
Mr. Davis, come on.
I was at the mayor's office and I asked to make an appointment for to go over this abatement. I still feel strongly, and this is an information meeting only, still feel strongly that the abatement should stay in place because if there's another definition for the word "completed", I'd like to know "completed" is finished, can't do anything more, and so forth. And if you read the letter that you have and which I just gave to Linda Davis, sorry, I can't get these things. You'll find out, we think we have a very good case for going ahead. Now, if we do not reach an agreement with the mayor, then we have to go ahead and pursue it further. So I hope if we don't have to do it, but if we do, I would also suggest that maybe we question some money for legal fees for the mayor because we got to help. It's just a shame that we were given something we didn't ask for and then it's taken away with absolutely no rhyme or reason. The project's not completed, there's a lot more to be done. And we would like it if you just recommend to the mayor to consider this. I don't want, don't think the town needs any more bad publicity or any more passion or what. As I said, we didn't ask for it, decided we want to keep it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Do you have a resume or a present?
At one hundred and forty-nine Homesteads. I'll be brief because I imagine this will be alluded to as they could mean. But I want to personally thank whoever is responsible for the marked improvement in terms of access to agendas prior to meetings online and to the minutes both in words and pictures. And I definitely want to thank Roxanne because I did call when I found that the town council received was listed on the right-hand column of the home page, but Roxanne very quickly put me to rights and held my hand at a distance as I went through it and saw the imagery. And I think everyone, I would congratulate the mayor, he's not here, I want to congratulate you and certainly Roxanne for making it more feasible for the residents of this town to look and see what's going to be discussed prior to making the trip here. I should end here, but I have to say, in all candor, that I was so enthralled by that that I went down to WPCA and drew down the list of minutes there and I found 2011 listed. And I opened that up and I found some minutes from 2011. And I thought that the long shot minutes from the September 2010 meeting would certainly be there, but when I backed up to 2010, I found that there was a lacuna is about eight months. So one has to go slowly in this, but I do hope, given the great leap forward that I and I'm sure many of the other residents recognize with matters of agenda and minutes, that that gap will be filled in sooner rather than later. And I thank you.
Thank you. Other residents or property owners? All right. Then under Town Committee Commissioners and Board Reports, we have a presentation, but first Chairman Treaster asks for about twenty seconds.
Maybe twenty more seconds. Eric Treaster and Chair of the National Building Commission. Later on this evening on your agenda is the, I'll be going to the class and hopefully hope to approve the these schedules that come from the building commission to you and back of the building commission and so forth. And my suggestion is that you establish an effective activity this evening and that tomorrow evening is our voting meeting. We will approve what you approved tonight. And the reason that's necessary is because I, my understanding made a minor change. We made the decision on the bottom, so I think it's hoped that we have much of that between tomorrow and tonight. And there's a little bit of gray area as far as if anybody has the right to appeal that these schedules, if you have an effective date of about fifteen days, sixteen days, that will protect everybody.
I'll guess first of you, so that's my, oh, sure.
Well, I've got you. You currently have four regular members and three alternates. In the next few days, I'm going to recommend to the council, one of our alternates be appointed to the regular position, which will free up an alternate position. And I'm anxious to get another high-quality alternate on our commission. And if anybody has any ideas, I would certainly say so.
Is your family in the board or after our action tonight to move Mr. Holdridge an alternate?
I have not, I have not made that, I have not sent a letter to you yet.
Okay. Somehow we...
Oh, no, no. That's for the, that's for the, that's for the Ledger Town Center Committee.
He's already, oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Also, on the Architecture Review Board, which is a critical part of the Ledger Village District, we are in need of a volunteer. He has to be by statute, by statute. He has to be either an architect, a landscape architect, a plumber, or a planner who's a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. We need a volunteer.
Pete Orsho.
Hmm?
Pete Orsho.
The statute says Pete. I don't...
You don't kind of withstand the women out there that might be there as part.
We'll take, we'll take anyone who would like to do that. And the ARB can worry about the next set of solar panels.
And obviously, a town resident doesn't matter because you have to be a town resident?
It doesn't say so. Not in the statutes.
So that might open up...
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right. And I'll ask, Frank Tara, representing the Municipal Building Committee, to introduce the presentation.
Hi. I'm Pete Bagatara. The Municipal Building Committee is about a year and a half old and we needed basically to find out what our, basically, how worried we should be going, what direction should be going. So about six months ago, we commissioned the SMAA to do a sound study and basically see where we stand now, where we should go into the future. These people here, my dear presentation, how they see it and give us some idea of how we should proceed in the future. Please.
Thanks very much. Thank you. Members of the council, members of the community, thank you very much for inviting us here. Can you see this or should we turn it slightly?
Well, we want the camera to be able to pick it up as well, so perhaps the counselors that are looking right down the edge of the screen may want to relocate or...
Sure.
Sorry. You might want, if you can present from the other side, you might want to be over here because, so you're not in line with, between the camera and the screen. You can do it right-handed and sell the thing.
Well, again, thank you very much for inviting us here. My name is Mark Zarillo. I'm a planner with Sins Mady McKee Associates in Cambridge, Massachusetts. And we have an office in Providence, Rhode Island, which is where our team is from. And this evening, I have Akilia Kantor with me, she is a planner in our office, and David Frieder, who is an architect and planner from our office. And we're going to give you an overview of our study that we did for the committee this evening. Talk a little bit about what was in the study with the scope of the study was and then some of the content. And we'll try and go through it reasonably quickly so that we can take your questions later on. David? First slide, just hit the down button. The first slide is essentially an outline of what our scope was for the work that we completed. It was a facility assessment study that looked at ten buildings within the town. Originally, there were more buildings on the list, but the funds weren't available to do all of the buildings, so I think it was, it was now down to ten buildings from fourteen. Before, four of those buildings, three of the buildings were historic buildings that were part of the study. In addition to that, the scope also looked at the capital need assessment, which was in fact the cost of the repairs for the municipal buildings that were assessed. And this was a continuation of a study that was completed in 1996 for the town and updated that information as well. In that particular study, it looked at the six school buildings. Six of the ten buildings that we have are schools and the other four municipal buildings. Lastly, we looked at the space use and space need in the buildings and looked at how or what the deficit would be for future growth that was projected by the departments in the town. So those are the three parts of the study. And there is a, I believe that Charles Carneau put the report online, that you could, that you could look at it online. This will be also associated with that and you can see how the scope relates to the sections of the report. That's what this slide shows. Next slide. A timeline as to the work and how the work was done. Can you hit the button three times? Essentially, in December, what?
Year.
When's the point? In December, we started the study and I wish I could read what's on the, we did a facilities walkthrough and we had a kickoff meeting and we met with the committee to try and understand what the committee was looking for and how the scope could be accommodating for what the committee's wishes were. The next part of what we did, let's hit the button again. In January, we did two walkthroughs. We had to fight the snowfall that came, we had two actually, two trips were canceled because of the snow, but we got through it. In March, we completed the facility assessment and we sent that to a cost estimator who looked at the kinds of things that we needed to understand in terms of cost and costing and pricing for the improvements. And then we started to do our program interviews and surveys with the department heads in town and we also talked to the school superintendent and other folks in the facilities departments. In, hit the button again, please. Why don't you hit it twice? So in April, we completed our program work and started to put together our cost estimate and then finally, in May, hit the button three times. Yeah, we did our gap analysis to look at what the space need would be and we looked at some alternative concepts. The alternative concepts were not part of the original scope, but in the conversations that we had with the committee, it became apparent that they wanted to know what we thought. And so it was no longer a situation where we were looking at existing conditions and essentially looking at the things that related to improvements, but in the discussions and interviews we had with folks, there were some suggestions about how things could change. And so what we tried to do is understand those changes and set them up as alternatives. Not that we are suggesting any one of the alternatives could happen, but that it's food for thought, for you to consider in the future. Thank you.
So our presentation tonight is essentially going to take you through the report that we submitted in May. We're going to start off, I'm going to give you a synopsis of the existing conditions study that we did. Then we're going to talk a little bit about the assessments and analyses we did, including the physical facilities assessments, the gap analysis and program and historic assessments. Then we're going to talk about the alternatives that we came up with. And lastly, and sort of anticlimactically, is the appendix. So I...
Yes, I must say.
I guess I was supposed to talk as these little bars come up.
Come on.
There we go. Existing conditions. So the way we start off these reports is we take a look at the entire study area. And I know it's hard to make out this map from the back, but what we have is the locations of all ten buildings that were included in our study. And this is, of course, the town boundary of Ledger. Then we took a look at the Census Bureau's website for the 2010. Now, back in January, the latest census information was still just being updated. But we did include information on the population of the town, relieving economies and industries, projected population trends and growth, and also, oh, public school enrollments. Supplementing the public school enrollment information that we got from the website, Ledger also provided us with a public school enrollment study that was done by Dr. Prada. And so we took that information into account also. If you could hit the button once more. You can see that over the next ten years, the enrollment is projected to decline rather steadily, as it has been for the previous ten years. This is just a roster again of the buildings that we're working on. We have the years that all of the buildings were built, as long as the gross square footage of each one. And finally, the three historic buildings that Mark alluded to earlier, the Bill Library, the Ledger Center School, and the Ledger Town Hall. We worked in conjunction with Building, Boston, Boston Constitution Associates?
Yes.
BCA. And they are historic preservationists and they contributed a great deal to the study. One of the things they did was outline which buildings were historic, the histories of those buildings, when they have been renovated and updated.
Okay. I'm, I have to talk and push it?
No.
Will you push the button?
I'll push the buttons.
Okay. So, SMNA, we have all disciplines of architects and engineers in-house. And so when we came to look at all your buildings, we had electrical engineers, mechanical engineers, plumbing, fire protection, and architecture. And in the physical condition, we assess the buildings for, you know, their envelope and all their internal systems for the historic preservation. That's essentially a subset of the, you know, the physical, you know, the weather envelope. And for program accommodations, that's when we actually got inside the building to see, you know, how the spaces are working and do we have enough aggregate space for what the job is that your town needs to do. For the ten buildings that we did, here's a shot of the high school, the mechanical engineer. We had to do with capital upgrades, which is, you know, the envelope, the roof, the walls, the windows, code compliance, life safety codes, ADA compliance, energy efficiency, whether you need to do boilers, whether the existing boilers were good for another ten years, and information technology upgrades. And this is, this is the spreadsheet that goes through each one of those, the capital upgrades, code, ADA, the energy efficiency upgrades, and the information technology upgrades, building by building. And we submitted these, we submitted our report findings to a construction cost estimator and these were the numbers that fill out. On the subset of work for historic preservation, the Bill Library, we assessed just the outside and what we need to do to keep that envelope preserved and is present. And we found that we have some conditions on your foundations that need to be repointed. We found that we recommend that some snow-melting cables be installed and to repaint and certain elements and to install some roof frames where they, where they're needed. For the Ledger Center School, most of the recommendations have to do with the exterior envelope, the brick, the cast stone, the deteriorated patches of concrete, we've got the steel window lintels, the supporting angles over the windows, and a number of areas on the north side that have, you know, where there's stuff growing on it and just to preserve the envelope of that building. And for the Town Hall, recommendations similarly, you know, you need a, you'll need a control joint there to keep the corners from cracking, ground and patch, not, not major stuff, but stuff that we think is well worth doing.
So another component of the assessment that SMNA did was a programmatic assessment. We looked at how the buildings were serving the people who were occupying them. So what we did, we went and took, we provided surveys to every department and school within the town that we were charged for looking at and had them answer some questions for us. The questions really revolved around what the department's functions were, what their space needs were, and if they had any sort of anticipated growth or reduction in size. We got tremendous feedback and we followed up each survey with a quick interview just to clarify questions and comments that people had made. This was really critical in helping us to develop our gap analysis and see why. So our first gap analysis looked at the schools. What we did is we took the qualitative information that we got from all of the surveys and the interviews and we used the Connecticut State Department of Education guideline standards to quantify it. So as you can see, or maybe you can't see, but Ledger Center Elementary School is the only school that has an outright deficiency of space. It's got about sixty-four hundred gross square feet of deficit. Ledger Middle School is fine in its current state, but there, we had heard through the grapevine that there's some talk about maybe moving the sixth grade in. If that were to happen, then there would also be a deficit there of twelve thousand square feet. Some of the overall issues that we heard that plagued most of the schools was a lack of cafeteria and food service space, particularly at the elementary schools, the open classroom layout at the middle schools, that is a pretty big problem, ADA accessibility at some of the older buildings, inconsistent heating and inconsistent electrical capacity to support new technologies such as computers and smart boards, and an overall lack of storage space.
Two other buildings that we looked at were the police station and the library. With regard to the police station itself, there were a couple of issues that stood out immediately. Number one, that the police can't really function in the space that they're in right now. It's an older house with smaller rooms and it's not really appropriate to police activity in the way that they function. However, they make do. And they make do without certain facilities that would be available in other police stations and other jails, I guess you'd call it. For example, there's no Sally Port, there's no, there's no way to maintain prisoners or people who are under custody at the facility. And there's, there's no way to deal with evidence and, and storage and that sort of thing. So when we interviewed the police folks, they gave us a list of what they thought they needed in order to function the way they function now. And so what we did was to come up with a program that indicated that, well, two things. The first program was to look at what a guideline police station would be, how big a guideline police station would be for the same population. It's about sixteen thousand people in Ledger. And if you look at the police chief's guidelines and standards, you can see that roughly a police station of about, a signable square footage of about twenty-two thousand square feet would be necessary. And that would include holding cells, evidence rooms, Sally Ports, et cetera. Those activities are not currently at the police station and are taken care of by the state police at another location. So it's really up to you folks to decide how the program needs to be accommodated. So what we did was to look at what their actual needness was in the location that they were, were in. And essentially, the Ledger recommendation for accommodation would be roughly sixty-two hundred square feet based on the program that they have now. So it would mean that there would be roughly about thirteen hundred fifty square feet of additional space that would be needed for, for their use. And that space could be added to the existing building, but essentially, as I mentioned before, if, if the space doesn't work for them, then, you know, it could be an odd, an odd addition to the building and maybe not really perfect. So I think you have to really think about how you want your police station to function and what you really need. But that is a little bit of the detail and the detail is in, is in the report. The next building, which is the library, we, again, we looked at the study that was done in 2006 and understood what was done, how it was done, what was recommended, how big the study was, and tried to understand how it was formulated. And essentially, it was formulated by looking at the Connecticut State Guidelines for Public Libraries. But again, based on population and based on guideline standard for that population, the accommodation of the, of the addition that was proposed in 2006, you know, was appropriate for, for the library and for, for the, for the state guideline. Subsequently, what's happened is that in the ensuing ten years, because the guideline that was set up for the 2006 addition was actually established in the year 2000. So we're now, we were now in 2010 looking at a new guideline. So ten years later, the guideline changed, guidelines changed slightly, state guidelines changed slightly, and also the population decreased slightly. So using the decreased population and understanding what the guideline changes were, we calculated what the library addition or what the, what potential deficit space need would be for the library, and it came out to roughly twelve thousand square feet. That twelve thousand square feet compares to the 2006 guideline of about fifteen thousand eight hundred square feet. So roughly, the total square footage has gone down slightly, but the need for library space still remains. So that's what you see here as we represent it.
Additionally, we did an assessment of Town Hall, again, using the same process of getting the qualitative information from the surveys and interviews and then applying an industry standard to get a quantitative look at what was needed. standard to get a quantitative look at what was needed. So in our interviews, some of the common complaints that we found or issues was that storage space, particularly the vault, is at a premium. There's too many small office spaces, and for many departments, they would function better if they had a larger, more open space that they could collaborate with other departments that are related to them. New department groupings might take, may create more efficiencies. I know that recently, planning, for example, has moved into the main building, and they're now in closer proximity to zoning. Creating those sorts of adjacencies would be helpful. More conference and meeting spaces are needed. I think we saw that tonight, too, that there's a premium of spaces that can adequately hold both larger groups and smaller committees. And finally, some offices were insufficiently sized for their purpose and lacked breakout space or plan review space. This is particularly a problem for zoning. They have to deal with larger plans that they can roll out and review. So taking all that information into consideration, we came up with a deficiency for the Town Hall uses of approximately 8,500 gross square feet. Next one?
So that's a quick analysis of what we did in the study. And what we tried to do when we then came back with our draft report was to give the committee an understanding of what the gap analysis meant. Because up to now, you know, if you said you needed 8,000 square feet addition, additional space in Town Hall, you know, what does it mean, what does it look like, how does it become physical form, et cetera? What does the space need for the library need? Again, you know, should that space need, or should that space be in the same location that it was originally projected for in the 2006 study? What shape should it be? How does it take physical form? So what we tried to do in our discussions with the committee and everyone else that sort of had input to the study was to come up with alternatives that actually could show you what the space need was in physical form. So this is not an architectural study, it's not a design for a building, it's not even a shape for the building. What it is, is simply program space that's required and how the program space could take physical form. Meaning that would the program space that you would need go at the back of the building? Would it go in the front of the building? How would it relate to the space that's actually in the building right now? And that's what we did when we looked at these alternatives. We didn't look at every building for an alternative, but we looked at the buildings that were essentially, that concerned folks, that someone had a comment about, that someone said, well, you know, how are we going to use the Ledgerd Center School? We know that-
Each of these buildings has a space deficiency also.
Yeah, and that's right. Each of these buildings has a space deficiency. So, you know, the Ledgerd School was the worst of all because we knew it was an old building, it had antiquated space, it wasn't a reasonable teaching facility, and it needed additional space. So what could you do with it and what were the alternatives? And so that's what these alternatives are based on. So these are not really suggestions of what you should do, these are suggestions of what could be done. And your own committees and Town Council needs to decide, you know, what would come next. So I'm going to run through these very quickly and hopefully my team can help me out. So I want to go to the, hold on a second. So the Ledgerd Center School needed additional space. So how would you put the space there? Number one, you could build an existing addition, very simple. Number two, you could demolish the existing building completely and build a new building if you needed the elementary school in the same place. That might be an unpopular suggestion since this is a historic building and everybody likes this school. You could renovate the building for some other use. You could make it into a municipal center, you could relocate the Town Hall there, you could relocate the police station. There's a number of things that could be done. With the Town Hall, the idea would be to demolish the annex and renovate the existing main Town Hall building with an addition. To build a new building on site for the former fire station right next door. To relocate the Ledgerd Center School, to relocate to the Ledgerd Center School, which is part of, one of the suggestions up here. The police station, the police station, again, you could renovate the existing building with the additional space. Or you could demolish the existing building and build a new building on site, perhaps with the same amount of required space, but that would function better for the police in what they need to do in their daily business. Or you could relocate the police station to a different location. With the library, the suggestion was to use the plan previously approved by the town, adjusted to meet the 2010 state guidelines. With the Ledgerd Middle School, which is a very interesting, some concepts there, even with the decline of population and school population, there still is a need for preschool services and daycare in the elementary schools, which creates a space need in the elementary schools that may not be able to be taken care of. So one idea would be to pull the sixth grade out of the elementary schools, put the sixth grade in with the middle school, thereby making more room in the elementary schools and building an addition on to the Ledgerd Middle School. Why is the Ledgerd Middle School a candidate for that? Because it has an open plan, because it basically is an antiquated teaching situation and it's very difficult to use. So if the school was renovated and a small addition was included in the renovation, it might take care of the other situations and space in the middle school. So those were just some alternatives based on the space need that we came up with that might happen. So let's go through some of the visuals. For example, you know, this is essentially a town assessor's map, and it shows the Ledgerd School here and what the size of the addition might be of the new space that would be required. Here's an idea of tearing the building down and putting a new building in, what would the size of that new building be, what it would look like? How could it be built if the existing building still had to be in operation before the new building was finished? That's an idea of how that could be done. Here's an idea where the Ledgerd School, Center School is renovated into a different use. Help me out with this one.
You buy some lead?
Oh, yeah. So this is the location of the Ledgerd Center School, and up here would be potentially a new school facility but on a different site so that you could maintain the historic
This is the Town Hall. The idea here is that you would renovate the existing building with an addition. So the rear addition to Town Hall would be renovated together with an addition that would go on the back of that building.
And getting rid of the annex.
And getting rid of the annex. And what this would do is it would create a larger floor plate within the context of the existing space so that you could replan the interior of the building in a more efficient Here's an example of the size of the building that would be necessary if the Town Hall functions were moved to a new building and the building was built next door where the garage, the old fire station was. And again, the idea of locating Town Hall in the Ledgerd School. In terms of the police station, here's the police station. One of the things about the police station's location is that not only does the site, the site is long and linear and has a great change across it, but it also has a, high tension wires that come by, and it has an easement, so there's a no-build zone on that particular site. So it would be very difficult to add on to the building in that direction, so it would have to be added on only in one direction. So the site has limitations for additions and changes currently to the current building. Here's an idea of how big the police station would be if it was, if the old one was demolished and a new one was built to accommodate the greater size, the greater activity. And again, the police station could be located at the Ledgerd Center School.
Right, and these options where we are showing the Ledgerd Center School being renovated for new use, it would have enough space to accommodate both the Town Hall and the needs of the police station, so those uses could be combined into one location.
The Bill Library. I believe that dislocation of the addition to the Bill Library is basically the same location as the 2006 study. We looked at the floor plans, we looked at how the addition would associate itself with the existing building, and we believe that the location of the addition as suggested in 2006 was a good idea, and it could be in the same place adjusted to correct its square footage.
For the middle school, the idea would be to renovate part or most of it to eliminate the open classroom situations and have all closed classrooms, conventional classrooms, and also renovate your science area to upgrade those, and to put a slight addition, a small classroom addition over here to accommodate your seventh graders. And then the idea would also, there's no auditorium in the existing middle school, so we would propose possibly building an auditorium over here that could, you know, serve as a gathering place for the entire campus for the Gales Ferry School and the Juliet Love Elementary School. So that's one option for the middle school. The next would be if you chose to put the sixth graders, to decompress the elementary schools as Mark was saying, and to put the sixth graders into the middle school on that campus that you have there. And this would be just a scale diagram, basically, saying where your classrooms could be and where your auditorium could be. Or you could entertain the notion of saying, well, it's too much trouble to renovate the existing middle school, let's demolish it and build a completely new school. This one would show a completely new, state-of-the-art middle school for the seventh and eighth grades, and here we increase the square footage to accommodate the sixth grades, the sixth, seventh, and eighth grades.
And as I said in the beginning, we're ending on a little anticlimactic note because we are following the layout of the report. At the end of the report is an appendix, and in the appendix, we've included the following information. The enrollment projections report provided to us by Ledgerd from Dr. Prada. The complete cost estimators report for the repair work at the existing buildings, as well as the building evaluations that SMG did, which were submitted in order to get that cost estimate. And the other big chunk of information that's in the appendix is the backup to all of the gap analysis. So the data and the spreadsheets from the state of Connecticut for the Department of Education and for the libraries, as well as the spreadsheets that we use to calculate industry standards for office spaces and for the police station. That's it.
So, questions?
Yes, sir. You said that you gave studies to the town personnel, and you use a lot of, I mean, questionnaires. Is that in the appendix, the questionnaires and the responses?
Not every single one, because frankly, and this is not a slate on anyone, but they're handwritten, a lot of them, and very hard to read. However, I, you know, we certainly can make that information available, it just didn't seem necessarily helpful.
Other questions, Councilor?
Ledgerd Center School opened its doors the year I was born, and we refer to it as historic.
So are you.
No, Counselor, I think you are, sorry, yes.
Well, what is your definition? I don't think of Ledgerd School as a historic building. I guess maybe you have a definition that I'm not.
Well, the definition, maybe Charlie can help with that.
This is a historic, a chunk of this study is paid for for a grant, I'm going to use our presentation.
Oh, it's historic, I remember that now.
And so, you know, these buildings, Town Hall and the Center School and the library, well, they do, they back, and they do have historic value, so.
Oh, thank you.
If you don't preserve them until they're 50 years old, you'll never get to be 150 years old. Okay. Counselor?
Is the declining enrollment, that in any way, is there any way to project where there might be a consolidation or elimination of a building? Just don't have a calculation.
Well, the enrollment, although it's, the decline is steady, it wasn't enough to really consolidate. We did do an analysis, I mean, really the consolidation, well, it's not even really a consolidation option. The redistricting option, I guess we'll call it, would be to move the sixth grade into the middle school, and that would allow more pre-k programs, Head Start programs, early childhood programs to move into the elementary schools. But the decline isn't enough that your schools are going, frankly, currently, your schools are just on the brink of being crowded. They're not crowded yet, but because the population's declining, it shouldn't be an issue. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple more questions.
Just a follow-up to that question, if I may. Redistricting would also be possible if we enlarged the Gallup Hill School, right? So that's another option for, and that's a more appealing one to me because it would seem then that the elementaries are in two buildings rather than three, better resource utilization.
The reason why we didn't suggest that is because it wasn't part of the gap analysis that we looked at.
We suggested it in conjunction with one of the options.
Yeah, we weren't trying to find space for that.
And of course, I mean, the town would have to make a decision, and the school district, as to whether they would even want more room in the elementary schools for preschools, because we can barely afford what we're doing now to bring staff in and everything to support daycare centers. It's something I, as a counselor, would never support, just like I would never support the movement of sixth grade to the middle school. But that, please go on, Counselor.
Your cost estimates, the next step, in my view, would be, take the cost estimates, then you have to consider what are the other funding sources besides, you know, bonding that's paid for or repaid by, through municipal property taxes. And so I didn't see any of that in there, I guess that was not part of your-
Our financial analysis wasn't part of our study. Okay. Just the bricks and sticks. And that cost you see is bricks and sticks, we need to make that clear. Project cost would be a lot more.
I should say, though, that in relation to the schools and those enrollment projections, those are based on the Connecticut State Guidelines for the grant funding. So the reason we use those is because a lot of times, communities don't have the money to pay out of pocket or the willingness to bond for the repair cost of the project. So we look to make sure that those standards would meet the Connecticut standards for law, or, I'm sorry, for grants.
Okay. Do you have a rough value that we would use to say, okay, this is bricks and sticks, a whole project would be, you know, some factor greater? In other words, how are we supposed to look at your cost and say, all right, well, maybe 24,000 for the deluxe middle school, but let's, I'm 24,000, what's it really going to cost?
Well, I could, you know, I could just say 30%. I could just say that. But it's not that easy, because it depends upon whether or not, you know, there are, depends on site conditions. There would be a cost associated with discovery once you open up a building to renovate it, and also site conditions of the actual, you know, ground and property that you use to either build a new building or put an addition in. either build a new building or put an addition in a building. So it's hard to say it's just 30%, because there are costs that are not, that we did not estimate. For example, we estimated building costs based on square footage, based on planning. Okay, we didn't estimate cost, actual building, when I say actual building cost, in total project cost. But typically, the bricks and sticks cost could be escalated by 30%, but there are other costs associated with that.
Okay, thank you. My last question, you talk about the library, and you talk about the state guidelines, and I heard the population, sir, mentioned in there. So the fact that we have a second library in Gales Ferry, did that play into the analysis at all?
No, because the guidelines are determined by a single-source library, not two.
That seems odd. We're not even considering.
I'm not discounting the fact that you might have space somewhere else that you might be able to use, but the point is that the library guideline is essentially a form that's online, actually, that you could download yourself, and we've included the filled-out form in our appendix. It essentially suggests that the space use needs to be in a central location, and that if you were to have auxiliary locations, they would just be reading rooms, but the functions of the library should not be distributed, that they should be centralized. That's the state guideline. So as a result, we discounted the space that's in the Gallup Hill Library. That's just an extra added attraction to the library system.
Well, we've had that debate in this town many times. So I think that, I think that an important thing that I got from questions that Counselor Sullivan was asking was funding, well, estimating actual costs and then funding sources, and the options that involve schools, because of the high probability of getting at least some of that repaided to the town through state grants, become subtly pretty attractive compared to a police station or a town hall, which nobody's going to pay us to do other than ourselves. We need to keep that in mind, I think.
Couple of questions. When you looked at the police station, one of the issues in the past when it was first located there was the fact that it's on the very edge of the town. Did you get any preference or sense from the police about whether they wanted to stay there and have the town invest more money in that building or move to the center of town?
The sense we got was that they could be located most anywhere. They did not necessarily say they wanted to move back to the center of town, but they also didn't say, didn't think that there should be more investment in that building because the way the rooms are laid out and the function of the interior space doesn't allow them to do their business correctly. That's, that was the basic thought.
Actually, two more questions. When you looked at Ledger Center School and you looked at building a new school on a new property, did you do any soil studies?
Purely a planning study.
Okay, so you didn't see any of the Ledger Town Center study? We did a lot of work on soil studies and watershed stuff.
No, we just looked at, we just looked at what the size of the building would want to be. In other words, we looked at, you know, we've done a lot of K-12 schools in our office, so we took an example of what we've done before just recently in terms of size and orientation and so forth and layout, to see if that would fit on the site, and if you could place it on the site so that you could build a new school while the existing school was in operation. So that was the, just the.
When you delve into these things, we have a committee in town which has spent quite a few years looking at what to do with, like, the center. And when you look at a map and say, well, here's a great place for this, and let's put this here, let's put a road over here, and then when you look at the soil study, you say, well, you can't put that there. So that's an important part of the study. And last, I'll get that question answered.
Counselor, yes. I believe the reimbursement by the state for renovation versus new, there's different formulas for that. Those were not taken into account, and we have no.
No, we haven't done a financial analysis or analysis of funding. That wasn't part of the.
Okay, so if I see a total here, for instance, I'm looking at a total for a Ledger Middle School, new building, seventh and eighth, Ledger Middle School renovate. One is $20.8 million, the other is $19.2 million. There's reimbursement issues that have to be considered there as well.
And those are deceiving numbers, because as we mentioned before, one's a renovation and one is a new building, and if those numbers are just bricks and sticks, there are local conditions in terms of the building process that might change those numbers. So even though they're very similar in nature, they could be dissimilar ultimately when the final cost is. So those numbers, again, and I just want to say it once more, these are planning estimates, bricks and sticks. Any ideas or suggestions that you might have to look in one direction or the other, you know, should have a more in-depth architectural study that would, in fact, allow you to understand what to do with them, I think.
And finally, the last question I have is, I mean, I appreciate what you just said, but I'm a little disappointed because, not in you, but in, because I thought this study was going to provide us, I was under the impression that we would have financial information that would allow us to make a decision in the study, but that's what I.
So, basically, we got cut down to bare bones for the causes.
Understand.
We just got what we could get.
Understand.
I thought we got a lot for what we paid for.
Understand.
Now, the one question I have.
That was the last question you had.
You said? The two middle school, I'm looking at the longer sheet, 5A1 and 5B1. One says Ledger Middle School renovate existing building with no open classroom conditions. And you have a space here for new construction of 21,000 square feet. And then you have a build new, you have total square footage of 75,600. So I'm wondering, if the buildings are serving the same purposes, one is renovating and one is building, why does the renovation need more square footage?
On 5A1 is, well, that's just, that's just for the seventh and eighth graders.
Right, and so then look at 5B1, that, I believe, is new building for seventh and eighth graders.
Right, that's 75,600.
Right, and the renovate you have is 97,100? I'm looking at the summary sheet.
We don't have those numbers on the summary?
Do you want to see what I'm looking at here?
I think we've got a copy right here. So, 5A1?
Yes, I'm looking at 5A1.
Versus 5B1?
That would be the second one up in the bottom version, the fourth one up in the top. I think they're both seventh and eighth grade, one is a renovate, one is a build new. And my question is, in the total square footage that's required for each, in one case you have 97,100, in the other case you have 75,600.
I have to look at that.
So there's a difference of what, 20,000 square feet?
Twenty. Should we go back to the backup?
It's because there's a 21,500 construction. That may have been mistaken.
It could be a typo, but let me, we do have the backup, so.
I have the same question with 5A2 and 5B2.
Well, 5A1 says renovate existing building with no open classrooms and addition.
That's.
Right. That's not, that's not a negative. That's not no open classroom, no addition. That's no open classrooms plus an addition. So the 21,500 is the addition you have.
I understand. Jim's question is, how come when you renovate it, you end up in thousands more square feet than if you just built a new building?
Well, I think they both serve the same six, the seventh and eighth grade purpose.
They talked about in that six and seven renovation adding an auditorium.
When they renovate, the existing school will put in walls, you're going to lose a lot of space. You're going to have super corridors and.
Change from building to floor plan to the.
Yeah, you're going to lose a lot of space.
Need the same amount?
You need the same square footage. You need the same amount as classroom square footage. So if we take an open space and start cutting it up into classrooms, you're going to have hallways, and you're going to lose a lot of space that's now classroom space.
Let me ask you a question. In your evaluation of the options, do you point out where the renovation exceeds the cost of new square footage of?
Would be pointed out.
Pointed out?
It would be pointed out by the numbers. Well, we didn't write a recommendation. We knew we were going to get in trouble with these alternatives, so we did the alternatives to, as I mentioned before, to allow folks to look at what the space would look like when it was made in the physical form. And then what we did was we provided a price per square foot for the space that we thought was required for that program. So in looking at it that way, so the question you had was.
You know, if I have a school of a certain square footage that's adequate for the class load that it has, but it's going to take $6.5 million to renovate it, what could I build under current standards and my current construction cost? What can I build at same square footage, same number of classrooms?
Do you have a side alternative?
Sometimes they aren't exactly, and I think that's what Jim's getting at, you know, they aren't exactly.
For example.
You're saying no, you're leaving that to the building committee to say the options that are not costing.
Yeah, we didn't write a recommendation as to what we thought we should do, because we didn't, as pointed out by the council, we didn't go into depth with regard to looking at the site conditions, where it should actually be located, you know, what additional cost could be there. These costs, we knew we were going to get in trouble with these costs, because these costs were given as suggestions for comparison.
I think I actually have the answer to the first question, though. If you remember in the beginning, we talked about Ledger Middle School, it's currently adequately sized for the seventh and eighth grade. So however, it doesn't have, it doesn't have, I'm sorry, walls in the classrooms, and it also doesn't have an auditorium.
It doesn't have an auditorium.
We couldn't take, we couldn't take the auditorium out of the existing space that had to be an addition, because once, if you took out any of the other space and turned it into an auditorium, you lost something crucial to that building. That combined with the fact that you, once you add walls in, you lose square footage, that's why it's larger. When we went back and said, okay, you could also tear it down and build new, you only have to build 75,000 square feet, you just need to do it more efficiently the first time around. So that's why there's that difference in the numbers.
So you're saying that if a new building would require less square footage than a renovated building and provide the exact same functionality?
According to Connecticut State Standards.
Which means a new building would cost us less to heat for the next 70 years or beyond.
Less space.
Somebody jump on that, he's talking about a new building.
Well, I mean, for what it's worth, that would be, should be.
The problem is that the middle school would be better renovated all.
You know, the real person of matter is that if there was a real direction that you wanted to know, if there were, if these alternatives were, you know, to give you some ideas as to what you really wanted to do and didn't want to do, then you could, you know, come up with an agenda of what you wanted to study, and I think you could study that more closely and get the answers that you're looking for. And the answers, you know, might surprise you, but this is really just an idea to, you know, to bring the envelope a little bit and say, this is the space, this is how it might be done. But we didn't want to do the recommendations because we didn't go through a phase where we spoke to anyone who, you know, was responsible for the kinds of things that your folks were responsible for, the council was responsible for. So our study really related to what the committee's wishes were, and essentially, we could do some additional work, the way you had suggested. We could also do some additional cost analysis on the sites and what the potential buildings were. If you told us what type of building you wanted to put there or didn't want to put there, we could do that. So we're perfectly willing to continue the work for you. You know, and so I think the study is worthwhile.
So I want to go back to the discussion about buildings where the state might contribute funds versus buildings where they wouldn't. Did you say that you identified buildings where the state would contribute versus where the state wouldn't?
I'm not necessarily, I mean, we were able to, because the state standards for schools are tied to funding, we just have that, we know that if you meet these certain square footage guidelines, you're eligible for certain types of funding. We didn't do that for the other buildings as was referenced earlier.
I mean, sometimes a question like that could be answered with a specialist, you know, like, we went and got ourselves a cost estimator to help us do the cost of, if we needed to do more financial analysis, we would probably need to, you know, talk to someone who was, you know.
I understand you didn't do the analysis, but.
Funding is different understanding.
But you didn't say that you identified which buildings would receive funding or might potentially versus not.
Well, we know, for example, you can get funding for schools, and you can get funding for the library. As was mentioned, I think you can get funding for the police.
There might be federal funding.
But there might be.
Well, here's why I'm asking, I'm looking at the contract. It says, page three, section 2.5, identify projects eligible for state reimbursement or other sources of funding. And that's why you're getting all these questions from the council, was our understanding that you would be identifying not only just the cost, but where we might find some sources. Other questions? I'm looking at the same contract. Any other questions for SMMA? Nothing?
Could I just request that either, apparently somebody on the town council has electronic version of the report, and obviously you have a PowerPoint. And I was just going to suggest with the new technology, it would be great, there's no reflection on the videographer, but I think it would be much more useful to have that PowerPoint mounted on that site rather than to try to see the oblique view of the screen.
The report is already available on ledyarddevelopment.com, just for your information. That's all right. But your suggestion with the.
I thank you very much for the presentation tonight.
Thank you. I hope we didn't take too much heat. That was good, very good.
Just please, we're going to continue the meeting, so please.
Thanks very much.
The committee's satisfied with what they did say. You have to take the power.
We are continuing the meeting. We are trying to continue the meeting. So just don't obscure the camera and talk right in front of the mic.
I'm sorry.
Under comments of town councilors, first I would like to wish that Counselor Aldridge, give him a speedy recovery, back joining us this weekend. We bought him last night.
Other town councillors, comments?
Yeah, the past three months, the Red Cross has responded to over 40 disasters in clearly different states and the demand for blood is at an all-time high, especially O negative. And on August 10th, at St. Davis', we had a flood drive. I give never again, I encourage anyone else to ask 10 or 15 minutes in their busy schedule to do it also.
Yeah, the Public Safety Commission met last week with PD and they went over the elements and technical specs. I'm not sure anybody went over to, to talk to them about theirs proposed by the new building. Oh, I know.
See the package of reports?
Also, the Public Safety Commission is not going to meet in July. But will meet in August and I'm gonna try to reach some consensus on the information that they gathered and brought and from PD.
Councillors, have you come in?
I just.
The mayor's not here tonight, but several meetings this year. I've talked about trying to get some information. But I, I believe it's 2022. I go to the facilities committee meeting, I'm sorry, finance committee meeting coming up next week that has it on the agenda. So I'm hopeful that we'll get some information. But to, to put it succinctly, for the last two years, going back to June 30th, 2009, you've had a town financial audit that has noted as a discrepancy that this information is not being provided on a monthly basis. And two years later, that is still the case. And my personal opinion is that failure to provide that is perhaps causing us not to realize all the revenue we could and therefore we are potentially paying higher property taxes than we need to. So I'm hopeful we will finally make some progress next week.
Thank you.
I just also wanted to note that the mayor is not present tonight and also has not been present. So I think since early May, the town council meeting has a long list of questions. I had some for tonight that I wanted to ask and once again, I don't have that on. Thank you.
Any other councillors? The first set of minutes to approve the special meeting minutes of June 16th.
So moved. Second.
Meeting for the council will be adjourned session. Are there corrections or additions? Ms. Cogburn?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Weddick?
Yes.
Motion passes. The special meeting minutes of June 16th, 2011 has filed.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Cogburn?
Mr. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Weddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yeah.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
And finally, the special meeting minutes of July 6th.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Epstein.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Weddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz?
Yes.
Seven in favor, one extension.
The motion passes. Communications list has been provided. I see it's up to date as of today with emails from councillor Solzner refunding to the residents complaint. So unless you have other communications that we're not aware of, this list is complete and you see the referrals. There are referrals for each of the committees, standing committees. Okay, subcommittee reports administration, councillor Solzner.
We met earlier this evening and we have items on the agenda and we'll discuss those as they come up.
Community services.
We met on July 5th for a special meeting and the item on the agenda was the job description for the administrative supervisor. And we finalized it with input from the Public Safety Commission and it's on the agenda tonight.
Okay, thank you. Questions for community services or, or administration that want to slide them?
Finance, councillor Diaz?
Yes, we met on July 6th. We have a couple of items on today's agenda. We also received a revenue summary and appropriation summary report, which I'll be forwarding to the council. I would ask all councillors, look at carefully. It seems like, once again, we've overspent the legal budget and by a, a significant amount. We are, we have on our agenda, and by the way, that our next meeting was originally scheduled for the 20th, but I have to leave town and we postponed that. We're having a special meeting on the 25th, but we will still have the LBS people there.
It may make me wait another week.
I, I apologize. The, so we do have an overexposure in the legal account that we're, we will be reviewing in detail on our next meeting. But when I pass out those reports, please take a look. It's, it's not, it's, it's over the 10, well over the 10%. The other thing, we're, we're happy to say that the zoning fees schedule is coming up today and we thank Mr. Eric Freester and the zoning commission for all of their patience with the finance committee of the town councils. And that's all I have in finance. The other things are on the agenda. Okay?
Any questions for finance before we move on? Okay, information technology, councillor Diaz?
Yes, if you remember, town of Ledger received a grant from Northeast Utilities for their social media program. And Atlas Advertising was the company that actually provided the help to, it was actually Kristen that did a lot of the work on this. So I went up to Bourbon a couple of weeks ago to Northeast Utilities buildings and they gave a presentation and all the towns that had received grants gave a report. First of all, it was a little ironic that the air conditioning wasn't working in Northeast Utilities, which I thought was kind of amusing. But at any rate, Kristen did a really nice job representing Ledger. Ledger of the three towns really seemed to do, have done better or embraced it more than some of the other towns. But when, when I sat there, kind of just sitting back and, and thinking about all of it, a couple of things came to mind, one which I parked on a couple of times. And that is, if you have a website and you get people to rely on it, then it's, it's very important that the information be accurate. The problem that's inherent with the town hall doing a website, in my opinion, is that the web, the internet is not open between 8:30 and 4:30 and closed on weekends or vacations. And that's what we're really kind of relying on. And where she had relying on one person who does a good job, but if she's the only one that has, has any ability to input on it, then there's a lot lacking. Perfect example is what happened last week. When the garbage situation got kind of confused as far as the pickup and everybody in town had their garbage cans out a day longer than they thought they would have, is many people, as Bill can attribute to this, went to the website to see what the deal was. And of course, there was nothing on the website. Even today, if you go to the website and you start searching another subject, same stream, you'll note that if you click on Sterling's site, they're still talking about number one and number two plastic and that's what you can put in. So again, my, my point is just, if we're, if we're gonna commit to this social media thing, then we need to commit to it the whole way or not at all. And so that's sort of what I came away from this. Now, we had a meeting last week and Atlas Advertising did a little run-through, a little slideshow for us and talked about social media. And Jim is like anti-social media and Joe and I are in it big time. So it's just, it's just people in town are starting to depend on it. So just an, an interesting point there.
Well, let me ask a question.
Yeah.
What's the alternative to having the town employee update the website Monday through Friday? Eight thirty to?
The alternative is that other people in town hall should be able, in my opinion, that other people in town hall should also be able to make updates.
Shouldn't the department head be able to update?
They don't have access, that they absolutely should be able to.
But that doesn't, that doesn't address the holidays and weekends.
It does not address the holidays and weekends. That's very true. But it would still go, it still would be better. But I, I, you know, I'm getting a little criticism from some folks because I jumped in and started doing this. But people are looking for it and people are asking questions every day. Bill, you can, Bill's been jumping in, answering questions for me. You know, we, we can't fix that as far as with employees. But you know, if a question comes up on a tax bill, I, I really don't think it's fair for, for the IT person to have to try to answer the questions about the tax bill.
Tax collector should, or tax accessory, depending on what the question is.
Right.
And the thing is, if one person has a question, other people do.
Right.
So if their only alternative is to telephone town hall, well, town hall employees are stretched thin. So if they have to be answering questions, it could be better answered one time on a website.
The frequently asked question?
Exactly.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, we've started. So now there's more information that the town has put out there. So once you start it, you have to keep it updated. You have to stay current with it. You can't fall behind. And it does, it proves everyone's productivity, it saves the town life and it's a great source of improvement. Right now, we're doing Facebook. It's a lot of fun, but I'd rather have it come officially from the town.
Right.
So I used to be against social media until I found out that social media really encompasses the entire internet. In our presentation the other day, I, I, I'm really just against Facebook. The, and I guess that's my issue. I, I agree. I agree with you, with Bill and Linda 100% about it would be more efficient to answer these questions on a, on a website. So that when other people come in and they type them in, they can, they can see that it's been answered already. So there's an efficiency aspect to this. But I disagree wholeheartedly that it should be done on Facebook. I believe that that capability should be built into our website. Because Facebook requires a person to put in all sorts of information in order to have access. And I think if we're going to have something on a website, it needs to be, you know, it needs to be free and easy access without having to enter who you are.
But that's exactly what they're saying.
Right.
But here's my, here's a question I have. Who's, who determines that only one person has access to changing the website? What, where did that come from? I mean, why can't Parks and Recs update Parks and Recs?
Which you, they can't see. And which, which you bring up is an interesting point. Because department heads can't make the changes, now you have Parks and Recs has their own website. You have the planning department has their own website. So everybody's, all these websites are straining out because they want control.
But that's fine. As long as they're linked to the tax.
They want.
Yeah, well.
But.
I mean, in any organization I'm aware of, you go to the main website and then you follow the links to.
But wouldn't it make efficiency, make it so much easier if the tax collector could go in and update? Anything to do with tax collecting?
They should be.
Yeah, that's, so I'm asking, who determined, or who made the decision that they can't?
I, I don't know.
I, I don't know it so much as conscious decision that they can't as, as the absence of a decision to do it, to make it accessible and easier to use. So I, I think it's, it's more the latter. And I think that, you know, we should be expecting that from, from the administration that.
But that's what.
Because it's approved, approved communication for the public.
Well, the point I'm getting to is as a council, I think we should suggest to the mayor, because again, this is not our purview. We don't get to make that decision. But I think a suggestion should be made to the mayor that we think that it should be done differently, that it would be more efficient and there'd be more information out there for the public if different people could update their own aspects of the website.
Great.
Sounds great.
Sure. Would IT like to draft a letter from its signature to the, to the mayor to make recommendations with regard to the, the public access of the information? Good? All right, let's do that. Okay, anything else for IT?
No, that's basically what we did the whole meeting.
Okay, turn your head around now. I'd like you to supply it.
Mostly we talked about the Beaver problem at Lamb Town Road. But let me first sortify, if you remember at our last meeting, we voted to give notification that Mr. Major, who had, was forming on the Clark Farm, who by the way, is also forming on this state property. So we did find out.
Oh, that's, that's what it is. So I was waiting for that corner to come out.
So we, we, we did, we did draft a nice letter, a good letter to the mayor, asking him to notify Mr. Major that the lease, the situation on the lease, why we were doing it, and it was a really nicely drafted letter. Thank you, Roxanne. And so to my dismay, the mayor took our letter.
And made it to sentences.
And wrote a letter to Mr. Major, basically saying, Mr. Major, you're out of here. That's how I interpreted this letter. And I received this on about July 1st, I guess. And I've been upset about it since and I think I finally cooled off maybe tonight. But this was just absolutely inappropriate. I feel really badly, I, Mr. Major, of course, because at the end of the one letter, the one sentence says, and if you have any questions, you can call in to Davis. So, so he did call the, he did, actually he called the mayor's office, who referred him to the council's office. And I have, now have Mr. Major's phone number. Unfortunately, I've left the messages, but we have not talked. And I did tell him that it was certainly not our intention, in the way the letter was written and that I would be happy to talk to him about what our real intention was. Now, on to the Beavers on Lamb Town Road. The Beavers on Lamb Town Road are a big issue and I won't go into all the detail except to say that the, we did receive a letter, or the mayor received a letter, the mayor and Steve Maslin received a letter asking, the neighbors asking if we could meet or if they could meet with the mayor and Steve. And so what we have done is we've drafted a letter to the mayor saying we have received that letter and we'd be happy to meet with the landowners on August 9th. And that's where we are on that. And the Beavers are causing a lot of problems on Lamb Town Road in terms of the road conditions. And this goes back several years and I've reported on it before. But Steve had recommended, or not recommended, raised the possibility of abandonment. And they got, heard about it and of course got concerned and then that's why they sent the letter.
Phantom of the road, not the Beavers.
Well, if we could abandon the Beavers, that would be a real good solution.
We should have written orders to these three Beavers.
They don't go.
Bad enough.
They don't go easily.
Is, is there an option to ask the State Department of Environmental Protection to relocate them?
I guess relocating isn't really an option. The state has provided us with a engineering, I have my engineer friend help here, with some engineering plan of how to take care of the problem. And we have drawn up some plans, but it's not cheap.
And the, and the whole one is we're opposed to relocation.
Well, relocation sounds like a really nice word, like, you know, okay, little Beavers, you're going up, you're going to the, the funny farm park or something. No, when you relocate them, that's, they're gone.
No, no one wants the Beavers.
They go to Beaver Heaven.
And the neighbors are opposed to that.
Yes.
So. Which I understand.
But the state has been involved as well, giving recommendations. It is not a cheap process. So it's, it's a dilemma. It's a real dilemma.
What does that mean again?
August 9th.
Here?
Yeah, if they accept our invitation. And it, and they are, you know, Steve has all the slides to show the damage they're doing on the road and the culverts and it's definitely a concern. And the concern is if there was a big hundred-year storm, the road's gonna be gone. Would that be?
Absolutely right. Questions for ladies, ladies? Okay. For the vice president?
Uh, yes, a couple of things. First, I, I sent out an email on the, on the cap test results. They're really excellent. I mentioned that we went up in three out of four areas from 2010 to 2011. Now, I have a handout that also shows the, our comparison to some local, this is sorted by a percentage goal. So you can see we did very well in the 2011 results as well. The CMT results, when I wrote my email, were, they were not available. But tonight, when I was just reviewing some of the stuff from my presentation, they became available.
But tonight, when I was just reviewing some of the stuff from my presentation, they became available. So I'll have those to you shortly. But I, I wrote in my email, and I wanted to say in public how, I think it's fabulous that the, the school district continues to do so well with these test results, a constant improvement. If you look over the five years, they've had 20% improvement in some areas. And with the budget constraints that they've been working under, they, the Board of Ed, the administrators, the teachers, everyone in the district should be congratulated for the work that they do. Additionally, we've gotten the bids in for the bleachers. They were just a little bit higher than they expected, but that can be covered by other monies that, in the capital fund for the Board of Ed. So we should see some movement in that very direction. And that's my report.
Any questions?
Any other liaison?
Very briefly, speaking for the Ledyard Town Center Committee. The plan was to start removing the chain link fence in front of the fairgrounds. That's been delayed a little bit because the committee, actually the town planner, is waiting for final approvals from the state regarding the right-of-way. They're expected possibly this week, so we're a little bit delayed. But I wanted to let the residents know that that fence may soon disappear.
We'll get calls.
And we'll get calls, whatever.
And block.
Then we'll get on Facebook.
Okay, fellow other liaisons and reports have gone to a report of the mayor, which, as observed, the mayor's not with us tonight, but he submitted a written report, which I will read into the record. My items. First, congratulations to Callie Bateman, recipient of one of two of the ledge light Harry Watson internships. Callie will be exploring career opportunities in public health. Congratulations to Callie. Second item, Sergeant James Gilman has reported for service as our new resident state trooper. He replaces Sergeant Keeney, who was with us just for a short period of time as an interim. Welcome to Sergeant Gilman. Look forward to working with him. Item three, on the 9th of June, Officer Gagman and K-9 Ringo received a runner-up for the Watson Award, which is presented to the top K-9 teams by the Connecticut Chiefs of Police. Very good. Item four, I need your guidance on my February request to secure services of a state-certified forester to evaluate town and forest land. On April 5th, 2011, the Minutes of Land Use reported that Council Saumson had taken the request and was researching it. Then the Minutes of June 7th, Land Use Committee, state that the committee does not plan to take action since there was no new information provided, and the committee does not plan to do the research themselves. When I first presented the request, Council Davis remarked that Parks and Rec, while she was on the commission, generated about $30,000 from a limited sale. That would be of timber. Since there were no questions posed to me since the February request, I don't understand the apparent closing of the consideration. Certainly, budget discussions for next budget year at the state level are no better than this year. It would seem that it would be prudent to at least review the resource. So we'll come back to that.
Yep.
Item five, the electric bill for the main town hall building has shown a 23.7% reduction in kilowatt hours for June of this year versus June of last year. 2,320 less kilowatt hours were used due to the short panels. Item six, notice has been provided to the address provided in my office for termination of the land lease at the former Clark Farm, this is the item that you just reported. You are probably aware that our town attorney and needed parties will be returning to court on the refuse contract.
Do we have a date? Yeah, there's an August 9th date for what amounts to a trial on the forester injunction by Crane.
Okay. And you may also be aware that the developer of the proposed CBS drugstore has appeared before zoning on a preliminary basis based on the commissioner's comments, developers reviewing the impact on the plans. Aware of any particular requests of changes to the plans? And final, ninth and final item, the 175th birthday celebration of the town of Ledyard concluded its wonderful events with the old-fashioned fourth at the Nathan Lester House to a stirring concert by the Silver Cornet Band. Thank you letters being prepared for those in our business community who supported the five-week celebration with their sponsorships. Many feel that such sort of invention will apply for next year and beyond. Respectfully submitted, Fred Allen Jr., Mayor. Okay. Yeah, Saumson.
Yeah, the mayor's question about land use planning and the forester contract, what we received was a proposal from a certified forester to evaluate town land for a very small amount of money, which looked like a good idea. And when we looked into it further, we found that if we chose his proposal and decided to move forward with timbering the land, we had to choose him to manage the project, which would require a bid waiver. So we took no action on that. What we referred to as not having more information was there was no alternative bid. We only had this one proposal. I did look at town-owned land, I looked at larger parcels, I found what had been timbered in the past, what's still available to be timbered. I met with the chair of the Historic District Commission. He provided me a folder of about four inches thick of past materials on timbering. We did the research, decided to take no further action. Meaning that if the mayor wanted to do this, we would need three proposals. We'll put this in a more formal letter and get that back to the mayor.
All right. I had hoped that the mayor would be with us tonight. As you recall, there were three things that I wanted to ask him on June 16th at our last regular, last meeting that I was at, you had one that I was out of town. And the three questions were what the resolution was with regard to the usage of the senior center, which at the time, he had said that he was getting a legal opinion on it. And in the meantime, we'd received a letter from the Permanent Commission on Senior Citizens for us to forward to the town attorney, which we did, also requesting that legal opinion. And so we still have heard nothing. The other was what is investigation concerning a progressive fundraising on the part of the police union had turned up, because several of you were concerned about that. And finally, comp time policies, which are solely that of the administrations. And I'd like to hear more about the comp time policies and what we're doing to try to minimize comp time and perhaps negotiate out and under that, that policy. So, Council Saumson.
We heard earlier tonight that the legal budget was overspent by about 10%.
Over 10%.
Over 10%. But I, I firmly believed that none of all, none of that legal money was actually spent on any legal review of the Jazzercise situation at the senior center. Because I, as a practicing attorney, was standing next to the mayor when he asked me a question about it, and I gave him an answer. And then he turned around and he told some folks that he had gotten a legal opinion and thought it more was necessary. I think that's the only legal opinion that he's ever sought.
It was, it was well worth it for sure.
And I, and I think that, and I think it's not a coincidence that he's not here tonight. I think he knew that the seniors were gonna come out and force, and, because it was an item on the agenda that they were interested in. And it would also provide an opportunity for them to pin the mayor down on what's going on. And for those out there, just the brief recap is that there's basically a dispute between the senior center, the Permanent Commission for Senior Citizens, and the Parks and Recs Department. And the bottom line is, under our ordinances and charter, the mayor sits there as the chief executive and he gets to decide. And he just won't decide. And worse, avoids the group of constituents who are, feel most impacted by the decision. And I think that's what's going on, and I just need to reset.
All right. I have nothing on our old business. If you do speak up, I'll throw your piece. All right, under new business, before we proceed, I would like to add, I propose the modification of agenda. Add item seven, a general item, discussion of scheduled summer meetings for town council.
Second.
Okay. Let's call roll on the modification of the agenda.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Saumson?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Give me a quick discussion.
All right. Motion passes, so there will be item seven, general after finance. Okay, administration, item one? No action. No action tonight. For the, for the record, the earlier public hearing on the permanent, the ordinance establishing the Permanent Commission for Senior Citizens raised several good points. And we decided to refer the ordinance back to the administration committee to clarify some of those things. Okay, item two, Council Saumson.
I move to appoint Mr. Lawrence Helfrich, Democrat, 26 Cliff Road, Ledyard, as the zoning commission representative to the Ledyard Town Center Committee, filling the vacancy left by Mr. Glenn Gray.
Second.
Discussion.
Helfrich is here.
And he volunteered, so.
Doing a good job. And he's appeared several times at town council meetings. His other comes, also comes to other commission meetings. We've learned in his interview, our interview with him for the zoning commission, that he's got some excellent experience and background in the values of the country.
Yes, we do.
All right.
Let's call roll.
Mr. Saumson?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Wodecki?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion passes. Item three, discussion.
I move to adopt the proposed administrative research as job description is contained in the draft dated July 13th, 2011.
Second.
Okay, so the draft that was in the minutes and the one that was provided prior to this meeting was dated July 5th. So I have a couple of copies. I don't, I think they're available electronically for these members over here? No? Okay. Well, then we can just share these couple of copies, because they're, they're simple. Pass them down.
Tell me what the things are.
So there's one, two, three, four places where we put a period, where there wasn't one, or took one out, where there wasn't supposed to be one. Under, under paragraph label essential functions, there was a sentence added to the end that says, quote, "The ability to perform the physical demands" as listed herein, end quote. There's a follow-on section of physical demands. So the purpose of adding that sentence was just to clarify that physical demands are in fact part of the essential functions. If you read the physical demand section, it first also uses the words, quote, "essential functions." So the two paragraphs are now just sort of linked together. We also removed the second sentence from the first paragraph of physical demand that says, quote, "The employee must be able to pass a physical examination" including pre-employment drug testing, end quote. And we removed it only because it is, it is redundant from a requirement that was placed right above it. And those were the changes that we made.
Yes. A question? Yes. Subject came up, and this might not be the place for it, but when we have these new job descriptions, and even on the old, should we be stating whether this is an exempt position or a non-exempt position? So that the issue of overtime, whether it's paid or not paid, if it's a, if it's a non-union position.
But it's not, this isn't a full-time position.
It's just a non-union.
But it's not full-time, so it doesn't matter if it's up or not. It's like, this wasn't funded.
Does it say that it's not a full-time?
I don't know, we didn't fund it full-time.
That's right.
We funded it at $19,000 a week.
Okay. And I understand that, makes a lot of sense. But if it ever moved to a full-time, I would assume it would use the same job description. Only a suggestion, perhaps we should think about, any non-union job description should be classified as an exempt or non-exempt. Just a thought.
Well, to add to that, the last job description was the Department of Human Resources, who hopefully will standardize all these job descriptions. Because the way they're happening now is, it's sort of a shotgun to us as an input from whoever. And it becomes very difficult to.
Classification was part of what we kept in the job description.
I think it's great. Hopefully, we, we have a fix for that coming, coming with that. Excellent.
Any other questions, Governor?
Is that job in motion?
I'm sorry, that one, the, that job was approved last night, that job description was approved last night by the Board of Ed.
Oh.
So you'll see movement on it rapidly from now on.
I have one word change that I'd like to suggest. In the second paragraph, under knowledge, skills, and ability, it says, "Without consistent direct supervision." I don't think that consistent as opposed to inconsistent is what's meant there. I think it has to be continuous or constant is what I think is meant, but not consistent. It's not consistency that we're talking about.
Under what?
Second paragraph, under knowledge, page two, bottom line of page two.
Yeah. It should be either constant or continuous.
Continual.
Continual. Sounds good.
Continual direct supervision, if you'll take that as a friendly amendment.
Showing it's friendly, right?
I'm just not sure what word we want in.
Well, it's not consistency or inconsistency that's the issue.
Well, okay. But a friendly amendment has to say what we're gonna do with it.
He said continual. They persisted in our, continual. That's not a legal term, it's showing this.
All right, any other? Any other comments? Amendments, suggestions, discussion? Please call roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Saumson?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion passes. All right. Finance, item four. I move to approve the proposed revision to the zoning fee schedule as contained in the draft dated July 6th, 2011. Actually.
Effective August 1st, 2011, second.
Effective August 1st, 2011, second. And motion and a second.
Yes.
Now I can discuss it. First, I wanted to make this effective August 1st, 2011, in the draft that I passed out.
Why would it affect it in motion?
Again, I'll thank Mr. Trister and the zoning commission. And also, Land Use has been through this. They looked at surrounding towns and their zoning fees. And we added that paragraph at the end, which in essence states, if anything out of the norm occurs and there's some expansion associated, we can charge the person who's applying for the zoning change. So this passed finance unanimously, and we thank everyone for the help.
It's two typos?
Two typos.
Third page includes one reapplication conference, if you've done pre-application comments.
Third page, second line, complicated second line. Pre-application. Okay.
And, and the $200 should be shifted to the right.
Okay.
And then the next line, amended subdivision time reviews of the zoning regulations, $200 divided by $501 per lot, that's complicated. Should be $200 plus $50 per lot.
Oh, okay. All right. Plus $50 per lot, $50.
And under the additional state fee, afterward it says DGP fee, that should be a closed parent.
Not field?
Out of field. And I think $60 should be raised half a, half a line.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to express my appreciation for everybody working together on this, so.
I love your attention to people.
Yes.
With the modifications that Mr. Trister suggested.
That can be a friendly.
If you look, I know you're.
We're tired of looking.
You're a stickler for detail. I'm sure you thought of this already. Is if these fees had been in effect over the last year, what was the difference in revenues? I'm sure you did.
Decreased.
No, these are actually, well, there's some decreases right here. So it would be decreased, I think, probably on a whole, but I have no clue of. So it would be decreased, I think, probably on a whole, but I have no clue of where I would find zoning revenue, so I haven't done that.
I actually, it was provided to you from Mr. Truister to land use, to you. You didn't see it, Charlie?
In the original, that was the original one.
It was a reduction of about $9,000.
Yes, okay. And then there was some change after that.
Some changes after that, that increased fees, so it is a reduction, probably, but to what amount?
I'm sorry, I thought it was your turn referring to these fees.
Probably pretty insignificant, maybe with, we'll have some zoning building, we'll see an increase.
Well, hopefully, yes.
Hopefully the value will improve, so.
I have to be honest with you, it will be a decrease. I hate to say that.
No, we know it is, but it's not a significant one.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Please call a roll.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion passes. Item five with waiver?
Yes, I move to approve a bid waiver for Mr. Peter Giorgetti of 41 Wingate Circle, Mr. Connecticut, 06235, for miscellaneous engineering services related to road infrastructure design and construction.
Second.
Mr. Giorgetti, as many of you know, did a significant amount of work for us on the roads. A number, I guess it was two years ago now. He has a lot of experience. He's the one who came up with, for instance, the assessment spreadsheet. In the view of the Finance Committee, it's smart to give him this waiver, because there's no come up to speed time, and we will save money in the long run. In addition, there's no set amount that he's going to spend, so we didn't go out to bid. We didn't have a spec for this, right? This is help that he's going to need on a periodic basis, right? It will come out of his consulting line, and then perhaps even out of the others.
You're saying, Keith, that you have a...
I'm sorry.
Director of Public Works, Steve Massey.
I apologize.
He actually came to our meeting, and Chairman Diaz told him he didn't need to stay. There wasn't much to be questioned about this social.
Right. It's very straightforward, it's a smart thing to do.
Unusual for him to think a bid waiver, at least.
Yes.
I know.
But Mr. Giorgetti did a good job, and Mr. Massey really appreciated his work. He is employed, so this is not going to be a full-time job, it's just going to be working and fulfilling.
Well, he, Director of Public Works, only has, what, $20,000 consulting money? What's it?
I believe the consulting is $10,000.
$10,000.
But this is, some of this may...
May come out of...
Of the road money.
Road money as well.
Yeah. Some of this is related to the road work that we do.
Could be administering the project.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. All right. Any other questions, discussion? Please call a roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion passes. Item six.
Yes, I move to authorize Inland, Wetland, and Watercourses Commission to utilize the services of Mary and...
Chinati.
Chinati up to their requested budget, up to the department, the original department requested budget in the amount of $15,740.
Second.
Okay, so this issue came up first when I was eating breakfast. And I was eating at AJ's, which by the way, I recommend, it's a great place to eat. And a member of the Wetlands Commission came up to me and said, why did you cut our budget? We need these services. And I was shocked. I, so anyway, long story short, this is the amount of monies that the department originally asked for. It was reduced to $10,000 by the mayor, right? Wetlands did not come to us as a finance committee, they weren't able to make our meetings. We were under the impression that the $10,000 that it was changed to was adequate, and the department knew about it, and it was a change that was approved by the department. But it turns out that it wasn't adequate, and...
It wasn't approved by the commission.
And it wasn't approved by the commission, that's right. And it's crazy not to use this person, Wetlands needs this assistance, and this is what's necessary to support one Friday a week, plus their meetings, right? So it's budgeted for the amount of $10,000, but what we're saying is we want to approve the over expenditure, well, we're not really approving, we're saying to them, just what we said in the thing, but we might have to approve the over expenditure of that line to $15,740 at a later date. We don't want to do it now, it's premature, because we're not seeing, we're not sure how much they're going to actually use.
Can I ask a question? Okay, my understanding was, okay, it was cut to $10,000, which was so many hours, but then the mayor further cut it to where she only had six hours a week. So, or something to that effect. So I guess my question to you is, if we agree to utilize your services up to the amount of $15,740, it's not our job to tell her that she can work one Friday and come to a Wetlands meeting? Or is it the commission's responsibility? Or, I mean, that's...
Author.
Author, that's what I'm looking for. So how does this happen?
Well, it's a good question. We've already written a letter to the Wetlands Commission. Isn't that correct? Informing them of this action, is that correct?
No, I just sent them a copy of the agenda, so that they knew.
Okay, the copy of the agenda, okay, the agenda. So they're aware from that, right?
Who does she answer to?
Yeah, who does she report to?
Does she report to the mayor?
The commission or the mayor?
The mayor.
I believe the mayor. Maybe the mayor for administrative issues and the commission for policy issues, I think I mentioned that earlier today. You know, it's funny, because I came in, I spoke to the commission here, and I told them that, please come to finance, and we can take care of this. But I didn't hear from them, and we had a finance meeting the very next day. So Finance Committee took this on their own initiative after talking to them and seeing the original amount. How we can do more is, I don't know.
Well, if we do this vote, at least we're saying that we support them having her to the amount they request. That was why I was doing this. That's what I wanted to do, the motion, this way, I was to say, we support. If she is directed by the mayor, because he's her direct supervisor, not to do this, there isn't anything we can do, where we found direction saying that we would agree to over spending this line on him, to have, to give them the help that they need. That's probably the most we can do.
Personally, I don't think that having a Wetlands officer one day a week is sufficient. I'll go on record as saying that. I mean, this is certainly going to be better. But the problem now is, something even as simple as having a deck permitted can take weeks, because she's only in on Fridays. And that happened to me, with not my own deck, but a client getting ready to close on a house, and she happened to be out one Friday, and so we had to wait like two weeks. And the total, the total procedure took like a month or so, just to get a deck approved. And there's something wrong with this picture.
Yeah, we don't disagree with that, but we're trying to...
We're trying to think...
Because a bad situation, we feel a little better.
And the issue is, for the rest of you, the issue is that we don't have somebody, when we had a zoning officer, when we had a zone, a full-time zoning officer, or even when we had a part-time zoning officer, a different part-time zoning officer, he was qualified as a Wetlands officer. Right now, we don't have that situation, so.
Right now, we have a planning and zoning officer, right? We have, oh, no, I'm sorry, building and zoning, right? And is there any plan to send that person to, for Wetlands certification, or do we know?
Well, I'm still asking the question, what is it that we agreed to that was going to end on June 30?
Well, did we ever get a job description from Biden, the positions? So what is the job description for the individual that's working in the position? There's the answer. If that job description, which I guess is not written, if we had a job description that combined the two jobs, it would be in there if they respected to be the Wetlands officer or not.
Didn't we see one last year?
That was a...
There are actually three separate job descriptions, I believe. There's a Wetlands job description, I believe, a zoning, and a...
But right now, we have...
It never went that way, because it didn't have to be the same individual.
Correct.
But they don't preclude it being the same individual, so they stand as they are.
But if we combine, well, we have a combined position now. There should be a job description for a combined position.
It meets the requirements of both.
We entertained that last year in session. Never did again.
There's no reason to keep flip-flopping back and forth, you know? You have a document that describes duties in one half, and a document that describes duties in the other half.
And they're two different union positions. So if you're going to have a combined union position, I would think you need a new job description, and I would have thought you would have needed a new approval. Yes, and you have union approval, and you haven't agreed.
Maybe some...
But I would...
Because a union position...
It's a union position, we need to have a joint, we have to have some kind of a job description that combines it. And I think if we had the job description, we would know if there was an intent for that person to change.
But this one is not a union position.
No, because it's just all the Wetlands.
This is one of the reasons I was hopeful the mayor would be here tonight, it's why I was hopeful he would be here at the last meeting, I was hopeful he would attend June meetings, because we had many discussions like this, where we talked about land use and combining functions and budgets and everything else. The mayor did agree at the beginning of this year to work with the town council on a new design for land use, made recommendations, we had discussions. A lot of them were dependent on the new budget and July 1, which is now passed. I think it's pointless to discuss it further without the mayor, I would really like to talk to him about it.
And the, another big thing was always when the judge probate moves out.
Exactly.
Well, that was going to be moving everybody together, but we still haven't dealt with the fact that as of June 30, that agreement changed, and we never had a discussion as to what we're going forward.
That's right.
But that was standing, I think we still want to do this.
Absolutely.
Back to the item, and...
Absolutely.
Any other discussion on the motion to allow expenditure of the $15,740? Please call a roll.
Mr. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion passes. Okay, item seven, general item, discussion of the scheduled summer meetings. I was going to propose that we cancel the second meeting in July, and perhaps one of the two August meetings. However, reading an email just before I came to town hall tonight from the attorney indicated that there were things that we needed to do on the 27th.
So Wednesday.
27th that are necessary.
I'd be happy with canceling the first one in August.
Me too, I'll be wed.
Anybody aware of anything that will become time critical after the...
It'd be a little hard for us to be aware of it, the mayor's support game, it's all good news.
Well, I mean, we did know about these, a couple of these legal things going on, so, I mean, we can always call a special medium, we need to, but, so, I get your sense that having August, is that the first or the second one, I think, August 10? That nobody would be upset if not the tenth.
What? I'm sorry, Councillor McGrath asked me if I would be canceling admin too then, and I said, no, we just told a little crowd of seniors, we were going to take up their topic, although we could perhaps, if we're different.
Well, it's not like, not like having the second town council meeting in July is going to give you much of a break anyway, because that's a full week. We have public hearing on water assessments on Thursday, the...
One of the council members already indicated he won't be attending any of them.
Sad.
If we cancel the meeting on the 27th, we can still have a brief special meeting before the public hearing, if people are going to come to the public hearing anyway, and still